A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All in favor? I oppose. Question made with the board and abstract number two of 2020, motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? All right, opposed, here. Okay, we'll do a recognition of our retiring chief.
What do you want, to turn me into my boss? Where I want you?
Well, it's been a bittersweet that I present this award. This plaque on behalf of the village board. Chief, you've been a great asset to the village, very professional, brought a great deal of integrity to the job, experienced from the town of Walk Hill, years as sergeant out there. We're certainly going to miss you. Hopefully you won't fall away for some advice for our incoming chief, Bill Hurley. Bill, do you want to come up too? Our new chief, we should have him up here. But Steve, I can't thank you enough. As the plaque reads, Village Montgomery presents to Steve Walsh, police chief, in recognition of nine years of service, dedicated service to the Village of Montgomery's residents. Your leadership and commitment are genuinely appreciated. 2011 to 20, March 3rd, 2020. L. Stephen Rusha Mayor, Johnny Schultz Deputy Mayor, Darlene Dolcic Trustee, Mike Flunbury Trustee, and Walter Riddick Trustee.
It seems like it's been longer than nine years. But it's been an honor to be here. The last five years as the chief of police particularly. We've got a lot of great things accomplished here in the village. Went through a lot of trying times with the police department. And I have to give a lot of credit to Mayor Rusha and the board for standing by me in some difficult decisions that had to be made and for their constant support. Particularly thank you to the residents of the village. You really are an anomaly in Orange County, I'd say, in New York State, where you actually appreciate your police department and support us 100%. It doesn't go unseated. So, thank you. And I am only going to fall away, so.
Steve, good luck with your new home.
Thank you.
What do you think, chief?
Appreciate it.
Mike, with the DOT signs for the village, you want to... Yeah, it's updated. For those of you who don't know, under Chief Walsh and Lieutenant Hurley, we are 74 out of 39,000 safest towns and villages in this country. Seventy-four. We beat Scarsdale. That's really good. I had real estate agents tell me, we just did their job for them. Okay? Now, Bill's going to bring us down to around 60, right? Coming from a police department, we worked for 21 years, we were number one in crime per capita in the state of New York and Canada country. So, I didn't mind coming from that to this. So, I appreciate it and I'm glad. Okay, real quick on this, the mayor had assigned me this a while ago and it feels like a term paper, but... An update on the truck traffic through the village, okay? It's out there. They know it. I hear, I listen on the CB radio, sounds kind of corny, but that's what the truckers talk on. I listen to the CB radio and I talk to a lot of truck driver friends. They know that this village is enforcing the rules. They know it. The signs that we have placed around on the village, not on state property, appear to be doing something. They appear to be doing something. How we can measure it? We can't. It's like trying to measure what kind of crime a police car does going down the street, how much crime is averted. You can't, but you know it's doing something. Our police department has enlisted the services of the New York State Department of Transportation Division to perform tractor-trail enforcement in this village and catch trucks suspected of avoiding the DOT checkpoint out there in Walk Hill. The first detail was last Thursday with marked signs on 211 directing traffic off Union Street in the morning. Why is that done? Because we don't want to block up school bus traffic and all that. So, these guys smartly directed over here, took care of business there. The team effort will continue at our announced times. New York State is of absolutely no use to us in this matter. They won't permit any posted signs on 17K or 211. Their response is, it's a state road, leaving us to fend for ourselves. I again mentioned, they have no problem putting Mary Alcuomo signs all over the place, but we can't put signs here. But, the state can also put their signs on the federal road on 17, and they were threatened and told to take them down. So, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, all right? The county has assisted us in putting a sign up over our nearly town road heading towards 416 that says DOT enforcement next right, leading to our village. That's really cool. And we also have two property owners right on the 416, 211 line, or Unit 3 line, that are going to allow us to put signs on their land that say, notice truckers, DOT violations, strictly enforced, next right, pointing toward the village. So, if you're a trucker, what are you going to do? You're not going to come in here. Our highway superintendent, Buddy Nelson, fantastic job these guys do, and town highway superintendent, Short Miras, has met with the state. The DOT were advised that they would make some changes over here on 17K and 211 to move the white line back a little. They can't move it back too much more because there's sensors underneath, but they can't do nothing more. Big deal. Big deal. I told my wife about that, she drives a school bus. Her and her friends are happy because they can turn better, but that doesn't help us as far as truck traffic. They're still here. I recently messaged with DOT employee, Daniel 211, he told me that they're blacktopping. They're going to do all blacktopping, all the way up to Middletown. It's all been done, he was measuring gas lines in the road and all that stuff. That's good. That's good because they're fixing their holes. Bad, what does that mean? More trucks here going fast? I don't know. Lastly, the state is doing no traffic study. I was advised that the studies can change from month to month, and there is no way they're going to do this. There's $6 billion, $6.5 billion in the hole, and that town wants to have a budget on money. So, they're not going to do anything. I believe we just got to protect ourselves by constant enforcement and being labeled for the village, as we always are told, speed through the village of Montgomery. Well, get it out there, don't come through in trucks. But they're not going to want to come through if they're getting summonses and stuff like that. I was walking today, it was a wise potato, 18-wheeler, wide potato truck coming down, past the post office. He wasn't making no local maneuvers. He was avoiding 17K, and that was just in Boyd Street, Goodwill Road. Remember, we also deal with Garmin, Ramitan Alley, and Magellan. They, state road, they direct them here. We were coming back from Florida on the camper. Our Garmin directs us through the middle of Washington DC. So, that's what we're dealing with. But these guys are doing a fantastic job with them working with the DOT, with the New York State Police, that gets the message out there. And go from there. And if these developments pick up, I have two people I'm going to put signed up. And we got Paul O'Brien and Tommy Steed on the meetings, on the event meetings with the county. We're on top of us, but New York State is of no help, zero. Any questions?
Mike, I have a question. I called the church twice and I saw him in person once, and he finally got me an email today because he was supposed to send Fred Buddy over, but hasn't talked to me, so let me read that and find it here. I have discussed with the department staff, your request for a transportation/traffic study for the Village of Montgomery and surroundings. Here's what I recommend. Senior planner Fred Buddy has been assigned to lead this effort and will be in contact with you directly. He was out today on medical reasons, I'm wondering if you told me. Directly. On next steps, Fred can be reached at fbuddy@orangecountygo.com or 615-348. Working with transportation staff here, Fred has proposed methodology to be used for such a study. This methodology can be shared with you once you and Fred connect. Please note, our ability will be, our ability will be to research and prepare a preliminary study of transportation and transit conditions, as well as options or recommendations to make improvements. More detailed, here with, analysis by a contract professional or others may be necessary, should recommendations be for physical or service improvements such as capital investments. A meeting with the Village of Montgomery area leadership that will be needed to agree on next steps and schedule, as well as to set the limits of the area to be studied. Please coordinate with Fred Buddy or Julie Richmond here to set that meeting up. We recommend some type of advisory group or steering committee for this study. That can be either an existing board or a committee supplemented by other individuals with expertise, or we can assist you to set up an ad hoc advisory committee just for this study. Either way, please consider what key interests and tardies and what key individuals with knowledge should participate in advising us on this effort. So, Muncie, can you... Going back deja vu here. Remind me, let's call him tomorrow, try to have maybe come to the next board meeting to discuss that and then set up a committee. It could be a junction year committee or maybe three year committee with additional.
That'd be great. New York is a really good city, can help us with that.
Dave's been retiring for the last two months, and he still has us at the airport.
Recommendations, they agreed and what else?
The master plan.
Okay, we did get the recommendations on the master plan, they did come through, no? We haven't gotten them later?
No, nothing.
So, Steve, getting back to what Mike had said, I had talked to somebody this past weekend about the paving on 211. I was told it's only going up to 416. So, the joke of that whole deal was, is that, you know, the bad bump in 416 there when you come on to 211? They're not reaching that spot? And I says, well, you think they could go beyond that and I should fill that in, whatever they do. But I was told it's only going up there, it's not coming through the village. They specifically said not through the village. Now, Tuesday employee, he's one tells me it's coming through the village, and he's down here, he was down here on Mason Street measuring gas lines, and now it's not coming through the village.
Well, those two that we met, they know nothing about it. They didn't hear anything about that.
Well, Brian and Sean went with DOT down here too.
So, corn.
You were there?
They didn't know anything about it.
Maybe ask about that 416, see if they are going to come.
Well, they should contact the center because they just can't come and pave. We have to, they have to mill, they can't come to a village and they have blacktop because you'll flood everyone on them. So, they usually...
It's got to be...
Let us know. So, that's probably why they're not going to come to the village because they're not going to take up that mill.
And this goes back to these guys doing joint venture with the state police and just doing what they do down there. And just having that belief that, oh, don't speed through the Village of Montgomery and have the truckers saying, don't go that way. Because I've heard they'll go through the Village of Montgomery, or they'll take Orsby's Road to avoid the Walk Hill Rest Area, and then they'll get right back on 84 on 17, and that's what they're doing there.
So, the Thursday that you mentioned that they had the DOT checkpoint was set behind St. Mary's Church. Some mornings I dropped my son off at school there, and I witnessed that on the mornings, which are 99% of them, trucks lined up left and right. On that morning, there were no trucks. You know why? Because they're on the CB radio saying, don't go through Montgomery.
Exactly.
So, how do we avoid that? We need that on a daily basis where we avoid the trucks.
That's not going to happen, not going to happen.
I know it's not going to happen.
But, but the truckers speak to each other. They speak to each, I mean, I travel all over this country and more and more, I've been in every state except the vice governor's coming up in June. They talk to each other constantly, and that gets out there. So, they're going to tell them, don't go through the Village of Montgomery. You can't have the DOT with us all the time.
No, I know that. I know. That's the only reason the trucks weren't here.
Well, they'll know it, they'll just, that's why these guys aren't telling them. They'll never know when they're here or not. They'll just pop up. They're not going to broadcast it.
Well, no, but once it's set up, then the truckers say, hey, listen, I just got pulled over by DOT. Nobody else in the truck that's doing illegal or overweight is going to come through the village at that point.
And that's okay.
Correct, if that's okay. But I'm saying, how do we get their reaction? Just limit the amount of trucks. Because when that DOT checkpoint isn't there behind St. Mary's? It's like Grand Central Station with the trucks.
All rented. I can't get signs up on 17A. I had Buddy put one off the road on the side there. We have one over on Chandler and Frieda that faces towards the airport. They will not, you know, they should have did, should have just did it and begged for forgiveness afterwards. But I raised my hand, I was like a good boy and said, can we do this? And no.
So, there's no waitmen with a historical district on certain roads?
That road is a colonial road, correct?
Correct. So, there's no waitmen, nothing over 50,000, you know, gross...
Nothing, nothing. It's a state road. We're at their mercy. We are at their mercy.
So, the day that the DOT was there, chief, how many tractor trailers were actually pulled over?
We pulled over a total of 18 vehicles that day. So, we brought them in, they were about, they did a level two, level three inspection on all the ones that went in. We did about 20, 25 minutes per check on them. We wrote about seven summonses, we took two vehicles out of service. A couple of the violations that we saw were licensing information, so one was, I'll bring out a restriction, so they didn't have their corrective lenses on. One was a revoked license that shouldn't have been operating, so they were taken out. One was a propane tank on there that wasn't seated properly, it wasn't secured properly, so that was taken out of service. One had a broken leaf spring on one of the rears of the trucks, so that was taken out of service. We didn't discriminate on anybody that we pulled over. So, you know, we wanted to show, you know, equality between everybody, so we weren't showing favoritism. So, anybody that came through the village that we met got pulled in. And we did have, we did have probably within the, from 7:30 in the morning when we started to observe the traffic until about 1 o'clock when we broke down, 15 tractor trailers came through the village. That was all, that was all we had. So, out of that, we probably had three big rigs that went through. We had a test truck come through, we had furniture delivery trucks come through, we had a propane delivery tank come through, we had a cherry picker for Spectrum come through. That's basically just really quickly...
Most of them were for good reason, not misplayed by the GPS as probably, right?
Yeah, it's hard to tell unless they flat out come out and say, I avoided the checkpoint, you know, on Walk Hill. Now, I made sure that what we, when we set this up, that we set it up, we coordinated with DOT to make sure that when they were running the checkpoints at both the Walk Hill and the Middletown, we were running it at the exact same time. So, then that way, if they were trying to circumvent that, they were coming through here, they were getting stopped.
And with the suspended license, we definitely knew that the...
Yeah, it was a revoked license, honestly. I don't remember which, I mean, I do remember which truck, I just don't want to give up the business that it was working for, but, you know, so that was randomized.
So, to answer your question, yeah, I would like to have neon signs all over the place that say that...
Well, it just concerns me because, you know, not that I live in a really old home, but some of the older homes, I know you mentioned when, you know, you were little, some of the, you know, windows would shake and certain, but the amount of vehicles wasn't like it was when you were little here. It's different. It's much different. And I just don't know how, whether the state doesn't want to get involved, it's a state road, well, like you said, why can't you as a village say, we don't want these gigantic trucks going through the village, you know?
I know. We argued on the phone and I mentioned, I mentioned to the supervisor about the DOT avoidance. He goes, we're well aware of that. I said, well, you going to do anything? He goes, no, we don't have the manpower. Leaving us to fend for ourselves.
Now, if you do notice too, I'm going to issue that, I'm pretty sure that on the 27th when we were running that detail, there was a water main break at the Walk Hill Rest Area which caused a tank to upheave from the, from the earth. And I don't believe they're going to be running DOT checks there for a couple of months now as a result of it. So, my goal is still, I want to have at least one to two DOT checks per month. I'm not going to announce it because just like you said, it's the same thing when we run a stop DRI check. As soon as we get on social media, first person you stop, bang, and then the old Vidal Sassoon commercial, your friends tell their friends, and their friends tell their friends.
We want to build up the reputation like we have here about speeding through the village from Grand Central Station out there.
Well, that's another thing. I mean, I'm, I mean, not that I'm, you know, advocate of pulling over anybody that speeds through the village, but in that 20 mile an hour zone, you know, I see Don often, not every morning, but sometimes we, you know, see each other, drop them off to get to school, and sometimes we talk afterwards. I don't have radar in my hand, but I know what 20 miles an hour looks like, and I see, you know, sewer trucks, certain, you know, right by, you know? So, I don't know how, you know, that, you just don't go right into that, pull them right over. There's a cop there directing traffic, and sometimes it's just after the flow of traffic and, you know, sometimes I don't mention any names, but then you start talking, they'll be dealing. It's not the end of the world if somebody's doing 27 and a 20. But I know, and I see that sign in the school zone, that's a bit, someone's kid runs out at 27 or 30 miles an hour, truck is much harder, so now that he's going 15 or 20.
Yeah, I got four grandkids, my wife and I walk this village every single day. I mean, we live in residential heights, there's no sidewalks. We have no sidewalks. We're like doing one of these things, ah, coming right by, avoiding the traffic light down here.
And she fast noticed, she's back by the way, but I'm saying I want to see more blue and red lights around the area, and just saying that it just seems that sometimes it's like, wait a minute, I should be a cop, I could have got a little, you know, a little pat in the back.
Well, they are doing something, like I said, for number 74, 39,000.
You just warning you?
No, sir.
Well, you just warning now?
When I said chief, you weren't the chief yet?
It's actually Saturday. Before you give your report. I hope you have your report ready. I get a pass of that.
Mike, thank you for everything you're doing. I appreciate the excuse that it's a state road. I keep hearing that, not excuse for you, but from this DOT, that if they, if these trucks have to turn on 17K to 11 and have to go on the other side of the road to make that turn, even with that line being pulled over, because I watch this daily, I mean, that's my office, that's a safety issue. So, no longer is an excuse that it's a state road. If they can't safely make that turn without going over the sidewalk with their back wheels or have to go to the incoming traffic to make that turn, that's a problem. So, DOT should address that. It is a, it's a state road, yes, but they're not safely making that turn.
You know what? I agree with you and...
I mean, that should be a reason that they can't come through.
Think of again, in front of the middle school, high school, and Dollar General, there's no traffic light there, and the school buses. The whole time my girls were in schools, now the teacher's over there, my wife drives a school bus there. There's no traffic light there. There's no traffic light. Then I'm, I'm sure people will leave in New York.
And they're also driving fast, Jeff said too, coming down 17K, and I keep asking to have one of those signs put up that says 30 miles an hour, so they could see how fast they're coming through?
We can't put it up.
No, no, you know, the little, that sign, that...
The monitor button.
Right, and I keep hearing it's broken. But it would be nice, I mean, they could set it up in that turning lane there.
I'm not going to put it up or anything, and again, these guys, these guys are out there doing it, this joint...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thank you.
It's fantastic.
I think the more we annoy the truck drivers, the better, but, you know, making it inconvenienced for them to come through. But if we could start maybe even pulling them over for going very fast through 17K. I look up and I could hear the trucks rev up, and I look at the light and it's red, and they're flying through it because they're trying to get through the light.
Like Steve was saying, you know, we've got to keep, we've got to keep this village, we've got to keep this village under control, we've got to keep it view... My kids are at their houses here now, I tell them.
All right, we're ready.
I, William Hurley, do solemnly swear...
I, William Hurley, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of part-time police chief...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of part-time police chief...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome.
Speed.
Does he get a reason on that right?
Yeah, you got to check that.
It gets a bottle of aspirin.
Paul, you have something to say?
Yeah, just on the young lady's point, on the radar, speed, digital sign, I swear I heard a few months back that we had one, but maybe it was out of service and an expensive repair perhaps. Maybe that's something we could take a second look at, see if we can, I'm happy to explore, you know, with the chief or whoever, maybe a grant to get it fixed or something.
Yeah, I talked about that last year, but we're at, I remember about $40,000 over the 2% cap, so we might not be able to finish this budget this year. Unless we can get a grant.
Yeah, we'll tell them like a micro grant or something like that.
Chief, you want to look into a grant?
Somebody that I just saw said there was one on Kaiser Town Road for a very long time, but she made it sound like it was like just there. But I've been asking now for a while, so is there another one?
I've seen quite a few around in different areas.
Yeah, some are permanently installed, some are like a trailer or whatever, but if we have something that we could maybe use or leverage or a relationship with a neighboring...
Yeah, borrow one from...
Or maybe look on auctions.com or whatever.
I think the one that we have, we might be able to circle us and then we put that towards the purchase of a new one, even one that's not basically the speed sign, but it's the one we can attach to the pole and just secure it to that, power it up, and then it'll be being specified.
Bring in capital reserves, you sell it, you find money, so. Okay, you have your report ready here?
Basically, we haven't, nobody hates when I stand, but, so, like I said, we did the motor vehicle enforcement, commercial motor vehicle enforcement on the 27th. We worked hand in hand with the state police and the Department of Transportation. Like I said, we did a total of 18 tractor, I'm sorry, 18 commercial motor vehicles. One hazmat issue, we had three licensing issues, and then three road secures. There were also 23 observations done on motor vehicles, however, reporting to the state police guys and the DOT guys. Not all of those are able to be written as summons for, so they were just noted in the report. We did it from 7:30 in the morning till about 1:00 in the afternoon. It was staffed with, like I said, one state police, commercial motor vehicle enforcement personnel, one Department of Transportation personnel, three of our officers, and plus myself, and Sergeant Brer supervising the area. In addition, we did the St. Patty's ramble, so everything is in place for that. I filed all the permits for the road breaks.
Raising everything.
Correct. I'll be working with Buddy and DPW on getting the road closures done for that day and the signage done for the new parking. Really, nothing else. You know, the speeding is always a big issue for us in the village, not just in the constituents, but as well to us. It's a big problem. I wish we could be every place at every time, you know, it's unfortunate. And I'm not using it as an excuse, but, you know, I've been doing police work many, many, about 27 years, so, you know, I've explored just about every avenue and, you know, I believe we'll just keep hitting them and keep enforcing them as best as we can, and I promise you the results will come.
Chief, I understand that they also have the, you know, the sign that again, bleeps and tells you that you're 10 miles over the speed limit.
Correct.
Don't they also have ones that actually record license plate and the speed of the car?
None that I've seen or used myself. I know anytime we would put it out in other agencies, we would get phone calls as soon as the flash of light came on, they'd be like, hey, I wasn't speeding, but that had took a picture of me, can you take it out of the database? And, you know, it's like, okay, well, we'll go into the computer and remove it. But I can definitely look into that and see if there's one that's recorded, you know, keeps a database. I know we've used ones where there are pressure ropes on the floor that can actually tell, you know, the speed, so we can put them out. There's a box that gets chained to a telephone pole or something, and there's a tube on forward and backward, and then that way when the traffic comes through, it actually can monitor how fast the car is moving without basically radar. It can also do a recording of it, what times of day, what times of speed, what types of speed are happening, and then it can give us a breakdown recorder. So, I could look into utilizing one of those. I'm sure one of the neighboring agencies will have on the road, we might be able to borrow. We do study on a couple of different roads. And then it can give us a a breakdown recorder, so I could, I could look into utilizing one of those. I'm sure one of the uh the neighboring uh agencies will have on the road, we might be able to borrow. We do study on a couple of different roads that, you know, people are complaining about.
Probably a great study for for Union, you know, right in front of the uh elementary school.
Cause one thing we have seen before when we utilize those signs is sometimes people see it as a contest. So are we really, are we getting true readings, you know, somebody's, you know, in the middle of the night, it's like, how fast can I get that sign to stand going? So is that really a true speed besides the, you know, the the bureaucracy of doing that?
Put it in the village, right, and put a cop like right across the street from it and let some yoke, you know, idiot do that at two o'clock in the morning.
I definitely have uh, you know, purchased radars that uh are battery operated as well. So instead of the car being uh out in plain sight, I hide the car off, I have another person just stand out there. Um I did have a a goal, although I really wanna give away all my secrets, but I really want a cherry picker. I'm gonna put up, I'm gonna put up like a, you know, a cherry picker in the summertime in a, in a high traffic area. And we'll have somebody up in the top and, you know, a couple of road cones and people on the side and they won't suspect us. And we'll get a couple that way. I know you're, I know you're recording live, but. You know, so I definitely have some great ideas that uh that we we're gonna enforce.
For non-villain town residents?
I'm sorry?
For non-villain town residents.
Being recorded, but uh yeah, um we will take, we will take it into consideration and use discretion, but.
That senior thing I wanna do with you all too.
Very good. Excellent.
And the floor looks great down there too.
Yeah, very good, but we have a. We have a third, a third section in the uh in the old chief's office, uh probably be finished tomorrow or uh tomorrow. Probably, I think tomorrow should be done, as long as the, not too much moisture on the on the floor, but everything looks great.
Everybody for moving that along too. Thank you, chief.
Thanks, sir.
Buddy?
Okay, the two thousand twenty-one CBD grant, this is uh, I know, um I wanna talk about that also. We got some other projects and.
I'm probably talking about the senior center addition.
Okay, as long as we do that and.
That's better than doing a standalone, you think?
Oh, I agree with you. Yeah, I went over it with Buddy.
Well, I was a standalone, but you you guys came up with the the addition.
Right. We talked, we got a grant watching and uh we talked about the size of it and uh we talked about the grants. I think we have to, I'm studying somebody, whether it's Lincoln Tully.
Yeah, are you gonna use um Karen Barnes or you wanna just leave it to Lincoln Tully? I know you don't want.
Is it cost over five hundred dollars? Reimbursable or no?
Uh yeah, but that's that's one. So what happened was, you know, when we did it last year, then we got kicked back because, you know, they came up, they weren't eligible, and then Lincoln Tully did that fast track one for the generator.
So what do you, what do you prefer to do on this one? Lincoln Tully or Karen?
Lincoln Tully, Karen calls, Lincoln Tully doesn't wait.
Okay, so let's do that then.
Yeah.
Right? Um it's gonna have to be a valid wage probably then, but you can do a two-year and probably.
I would do a two-year one. Try a two-year because, you know, three years are tough to get.
You probably can do some force labor, force account laboring, I would think.
Yeah, that's.
I would think so, because we did, we did that with the senior center, senior center proper. Uh we only got that a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar grant.
Okay.
All right, so we probably can do that. But to see what the total, get your costs together, right? But to community development, CBDG, um senior citizen facilities are highly funded, correct?
Right. Right, especially for us, but when I talked to them, they said that we're not really eligible for much of the way grants because of the income level of the village. The only thing that's really that we are eligible for would be for senior citizen activities. And just to fill you in, what we're looking at is an extension on the Swyacata end of the building, if you know where that is. Towards the uh, to the building, this is Swyacata's in the back, so you know, you know exactly where it is. But uh to come off of that, the width of the building and maybe about twenty feet. And that would give us additional storage, which we have virtually none of. And then the other part of about three quarters of the addition would be like a kind of a comfortable meeting area for seniors to be. Couches, uh chairs, cause one of the the shortcomings that we have, it's a beautiful hall, but a lot of the seniors really like Wesley Hall because it had that comfort level of being able to come in, just hang out. And and again, in our senior center, there's no place to put couches and comfortable things when we have other meetings with it, whether we use it for DPW meetings or we rent it out for events or whatever.
So the doors you wouldn't change, the doors you wouldn't change, I mean, should I keep them as consistent as they're expensive doors?
Right.
Yeah.
So that's basically the concept we're looking at.
True. We'll keep moving forward.
So now, if I'm right, we have some public caring for this project. You wanna do that now? You wanna do it the first week in April? First week in, what, April?
Well, we have our budget public here, let's do it the second week.
Well, the paperwork has to begin by April twenty-third.
All right, so let's do it, let's do it, is it six forty-five or? Budget public here will probably be at seven o'clock.
Okay. Let's see what they do. It's gonna be on the sub. I mean, it should be okay.
Yeah.
But, you know, like I thought I can have the paperwork done before that.
You wanna do it next meeting or is it? Let's do it next meeting.
Let's do it next meeting. I think that would be, I think that would be better.
It's not gonna take long public caring, I don't think it's controversial.
Though, though.
Five four anyway, so, okay, motion, I'll take a public hearing on introductory local. Would it be introductory local? No, it would be just on the uh CBD project. CBDG. Right, okay, motion for seven fifteen next meeting?
I'll make it.
Sure.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, carry. Okay, what else, buddy? Water leaks?
Uh yeah, we have plenty of those, but um uh New York League of Fashion was here, did a survey of the whole village. So they they found four water leaks, you know, I shouldn't say minor ones. Um they estimated fifty-three thousand gallons a day, which is a little bit shocking. So we got them all repaired and it was about twenty-five thousand. So right now we have one leak left that we're working on. And uh, you know, as soon as we fix that one, something else, so, you know, that'll lead to.
We're getting that through.
One leak.
We're getting that through the water authority, rural water?
Yeah, I think it's the water.
The county's continuing.
It is, um yeah, thanks to them, yeah, it's with no cost to us. But the next time, um I wanna try to do a different route through them. Instead of using their company, we can actually use uh a different company that reimbursed the village and will pay that company. Was the, I have a person that that we use that really knows the village. And, you know, this guy came from, he was above Binghamton, came down to just grab the map and he was done with the entire village in somewhere like sixteen hours. And told me he was done. I was like, did fourteen miles of borderline in sixteen or eighteen hours. Yeah, that's that's moving by himself, so.
That's scary.
So we don't, I don't know if I have the full, yeah, I think I have the full scope. But as soon as he found some leaks, you know, he could write that up and probably screw that town. So that's, that was the only issue. I wasn't telling, though, that you had that problem. A couple of towns had the same problem. Um that town in Windsor, it isn't in, but uh thirty-six hours. If I ever have one, one person.
Your buddy, I mentioned that the uh we, one or two weeks ago, about somebody graffiti the bench down here. You guys fixed it the next day.
Who was?
They painted it the next day, that quick. Thank you.
I don't remember telling anybody, but maybe I did turn.
You stay right on top of it, so if you don't let it, um thank you, cause there's, the next thing, we'll allow that and then the next thing, something else will happen.
Well, yeah, and the guy's been down to try to clean up the park of the top of the leaves, pioneers back up. And you'll have the, the pioneers back up in the tree.
Oh, is it back up? Good, good, amen.
What, what, did you paint it?
Did you paint it? You look okay?
I'll send you a picture.
The one that got that uh.
The bear's form though. He wanted to put a place in the mouth.
Anything else?
I I are we, is this time when we can give input? I I lost track here.
Very loose and gussy, you guys, what do you wanna say?
Well, I, three quick things. First of all, and I say this every time I'm here and I will say it every time.
Go ahead.
Okay, I say this every time I'm here and I will continue to say it. I cannot uh compliment the DPW enough on the way that they take care of this village. You call them and immediately, one day I called you guys and then I got in the car and I was going to the place and you had already been, you were already there. So, you know, there's real great pride in the village and I really appreciate that. And I have read somewhere, and I can't remember where it was, that there might be some considerations and I'm I'm not saying that we have considered it, but of um melding town and village police departments. And just like having a town department, um given the attention that the police give to us in terms of, you know, they know us, they're there right away if there's a problem, I would, I would hate to see that happen. I don't know.
We haven't discussed that.
Yeah, I I I read it somewhere, maybe it came out of the town.
If you read my hard L. I don't know what it said, hard L.
I mean, I would, personally, would never want to see that happen because.
That's why we have such a safe village.
Yeah, exactly, and they're they're right there and I.
But if you were another town, you'd wanna merge with us.
Yes, right, but but then, you know, the way I understood the article was that we wouldn't have a village department. We'd just have a town department and I don't think that would be.
So you had the same lawn mower and a big old lawn. That's what we have.
Right, right.
We would have that.
Third item very quickly, um the park that's on Dunn Drive. Is there any possibility of exploring fencing that in and making it a dog park?
Probably not. We already have two, two dog parks.
Yeah, we do, but like, that's real, I mean.
You're getting a little selfish now, Ken.
No, no, I mean, Don will tell you there are a number of dogs in that area there. Yeah, cause it would be really a great place to do that.
A lot of thumping, yeah, a lot of thumping.
Yes, that, and that's.
Is that still going on, you know?
Yes, yeah.
You have a trail cam there? I mean, something we could look at down the road, just down the way. There wasn't much maintenance in the neighborhood, or trail cam there or something.
Say that again?
If the neighbors took care of it, a little bit, that's.
Oh, I'll spread that word.
So we'll see if we get money, if we get money in Little Park, then we'll probably go to the, maybe a similar event or something like.
Yeah, I mean, nothing elaborate, just like a fenced in area, but yeah, there's a lot of, people just bring their yard stuff over there. I don't know, I didn't think that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll look at, yeah, if we ever get money in Little Park, we we probably will before long, so. Okay, anything else, bud?
Um just the executive session, that's it.
Okay.
Right, pretty quiet.
What's that?
Yeah, pretty quiet.
Oh.
Come up contractual matter, then we can talk to you about.
Okay. All right, first off, a doctor resolution, a motion to adopt a resolution accepting IMA stop EWI traffic safety program as well as authorizing Mayor Brushett to execute the contract. Buy-in between the county of Orange, buy and through its department, emergency services in Village Montgomery, buy and through its police department. The term shall commence on January twentieth, two thousand twenty, and end on January eleventh. Motion?
I'll make that. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I oppose, carry. Okay, then St. Pat's Grant Marshals, the breakfast is March fifteenth at eleven.
Mass.
Mass.
The mass, I'm sorry, mass, right, I stand corrected, eleven-thirty, okay, and one o'clock is at the um, at the the table, okay? And the same day, I guess, is Rainbow Dash for the children at nine forty, Run for the Gold at ten, and St. Pat's Ramble, three at one. Anything else before we go to public portion?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Uh I'll undertake a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Brushett to enter into an interminable agreement buying between the county of Orange and through its office for the agency operates a senior dining program held at the senior center at the Village of Montgomery effective January first, two thousand twenty through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty with compensation of cost not due to C twenty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-seven. And this is negotiated through law.
Right.
And and in the mega element of the company. Okay, motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, carry, okay.
Now, I'd say you two, the board to uh adopt a resolution declaring themselves lead agency for an unlisted, unquarterly inaction without local law, we just had the whole hearing on.
The mega deck on the side. Motion on that?
I'll make that.
Give you a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, carry. And we'll have to do the local law next meeting.
Correct.
We really need to remind me to call Fred Buddy and these guys to get, they gotta get caught up on the stuff. Okay, anything else? Public portion or anything else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, I've been, uh, my name is Chris LeDany, I live at um eighty-seven Weaver Street. I've been attending some of the planning board meetings and those are obviously are open for public comment. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments and 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 questions about the KSH development. So I just wanna introduce myself, who I am.
What's your name again, sir?
Uh Chris LeDany.
Okay, you were here for the work session?
I was.
Okay.
Yeah, so kind of, you know, Don took up all the time, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've known him the past eight months, so it's uh, it's been fun, so. Um so, yeah, I live at eighty-seven Weaver Street and uh the KSH development is basically, uh the proposed development is basically in our backyard. I live there with my wife Cindy, uh my son Ethan, who's a five-year-old, and my six-month-old daughter Evelyn. I've lived there in the village for about ten years at this point, and I've been a lifelong resident in Orange County. Finding out about this proposed warehouses and office buildings in my backyard is the first time I've ever really considered moving out of this area. The way I found out about this project is very concerning to me. I got home early from work one day and I was looking out my kitchen window and saw excavators tearing up the the land. I then did some research, find out that this project's been going on for almost two years now. Um related to the feasibility study that that link in KSH and owner has done way back in two thousand eighteen. And I'm just asking you questions, why weren't the, any of the residents um of the village notified, notified of this? Um if I didn't come home that day um from work early and see those excavators by chance, um I still might be in the dark about this project as many of the other residents are. After seeing the proposed plans for this project, uh there are many concerns that I have, so I sent two letters to the village government and I've not heard back yet, um but but some of the conversations we heard, had, and heard earlier um were promising. So I I look to applaud the board for, for undercanning some of the items that that we talked about early on. Imagine driving into the village from Middletown, passing our beautiful historic village welcome sign and then looking to the left and seeing the back of thirty-some odd tractor trailers buttoned up against a huge warehouse um that is totally out of context and conflicts with the quaint cozy historic nature of our beloved village. Uh I'm a licensed architect in the state of New York and part of my job is reading zoning and building code. Um and I have a couple of questions and concerns I wanna raise. Uh Village Montgomery Code one twenty-two fifty-two G states that industrial, commercial uses having more than four thousand square feet gross floor area requires the approval of the board trustees, along with the planning board. Um this also gives you a sense of what the village considers what a large building is. And and only one of these warehouses proposed is fifty, five zero times the size of that. Um at two hundred thousand square feet in the village, which is roughly the size of four football fields. In addition, these villages are so big that they require two means of access for larger fire trucks, which would then require them crossing and disturbing the wetlands to get that done, as Terry Downey mentioned. Uh Code one twenty-two dash fifty-three F states that the board trustees may conduct such proceedings and or hold such hearings as it seems appropriate for proper review of the application before it. There is a pump that the board consider this and have a public hearing as soon as possible. Uh based on my research, developer must secure five separate approvals from the village. One, the preliminary site plan, the sub, two, the subdivision approval, three, the excess building size approval, which I mentioned to the planning board and the board trustees. And the special exception use permit approval is number four, and number five would be the final uh site plan approval, which all of them demand a public hearing to make sure that the residents of the village can be heard in this process. Um as we stand here today, warehouses are not permitted use for that subject property. So it just kind of baffles me how far it's gone. I understand that a special exception is, just the terminology that was used, it just seems to me that it's um, it's looked at as a formality instead of something that we should really consider, you know, if it was a, a quote-unquote permitted use, it would be say permitted use within the the use table. That's why it says special exception use. So I do have like two letters that I would like to put on file for free meetings.
We have them, you, we, we received them, right?
Okay, so they are on file for.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So all those concerns, I mean, just the moratorium and the. Thank you, Chris.
So I'd like to uh. So I'd like to echo uh what Chris just said as well. I also live on Weaver Street and, you know, smart.
smart growth is needed in every area, okay? And I'm not saying we have to pick and choose what project we want, what project we don't want. In essence, this particular area of Montgomery is growing out of proportion, out of control, and the time it's happening is mind-blowing. The amount of these projects that's proposed on the board, the amount that's already in the pipeline, and the amount that's already, so to say, out of the ground, introduction. It's just crazy. So, I was not shocked, but pleasantly surprised when I heard the word moratorium for the village, all right? And I'm not saying everything has to stop permanently, but it has to stop long enough so everybody that's in control of every little department can say, what's good here, what's not good? You know, the, the traffic study that we're trying to get done from New York, the state, if they're not gonna kick back and do anything, then at a local level, with David Church or his new, who has already taken his position, it needs to be done. And from what I hear, I, 'cause I started, starting to attend the town board meetings as well. When I hear people come into the town board representing these massive projects, saying they'll have little to no impact on the traffic, it's like, I don't know how anybody in that town board, okay, is not up in arms just with the traffic alone. Forget about the size and the spoken word they're located, but just the traffic alone, it just blows my mind how nobody in the town board seems to be hearing the concerns from the residents. And that, the traffic isn't the main concern, it's one of the main concerns. So, thank you, Steve, for bringing, thank you, uh, Mr. Deff, for bringing up the word moratorium. 'Cause we're concerned as vill, village residents, which you're one of, and I'm sure many of you all...
We all are.
We are too. And, so, some of us have the, you know, option of leaving New York and going south and retiring. You know, my son is ten years old, so I'm not stuck here, but I plan on being here for at least another ten, fifteen years. So, I'm not saying that everybody on the board or the town board or the village board is checking out in ten years, but the future shouldn't just be looked at as a ten-year, like, window. It's gotta be looked at at a, at a bigger scope. So, the problem that I see is that, and I know this is not a town hearing, but the town's master plan is so outdated, and I know the village has no say, but the town and the village have to be, uh, work in unison. 'Cause one affects the other and the other affects, they both affect each other. So, how the town and the village isn't putting their heads together to say, listen, we need to look at things. The growth is, is out of control. Medline in its proximity to the village, I don't know if you said public hearing or not, Steve, that if you're for or against it, maybe it doesn't matter. But, um, it doesn't belong where it's going and how it's gotten the permits so fast. I'm concerned that a company that come in, they buy the property eight or nine times more than what Patrick paid for, okay? Without a single permit for what they need. They just buy it willy-nilly, okay? And I hear their attorney saying, the project must move forward. And I said, why? And he says, 'cause we own the property. So, they, they push, 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 push. Nobody's put the brakes on, and the only thing I hear from the board is they're concerned about the lighting.
Well, going on what you're saying, the property down there, the, this KSH property there, he came in here and he gave us a price of, I don't know, like, worth four hundred twenty-one thousand dollars in two thousand two, two thousand and three. And then he wanted to change to residential. And the reason he wanted to change it to residential is because commercial wasn't popular anymore. So, I was like, so, so the town's wired the dog. You bought that, that's the way it's gonna stay, because I'm not making any money off of that. So, tough.
Correct. So, it's not like the guy invested like eighteen million dollars and bought a piece of property like the people that Medline paid for that piece of property out there, okay? That's egregious, okay? And I don't know how any corporation would come into a town and spend what they spend on a piece of property without knowing that we're gonna give you everything you want because you bought the property, and that's what the attorney said basically to the people at the meeting. Well, we want the property, so it must move forward. Why is it must move forward? So, the word moratorium, if it could, uh, include anything with that project, it'd be beneficial to the village and plenty of the town residents as well that are just overly concerned about that eyesore. Not to mention what's gonna do any money. That's a huge, huge problem. And you have Amazon on one end of the town and Medline on the other end of the town. And before you know it, this little village is gonna look like some of the villages in other states that I don't want to live in. I'm sure you don't, and the rest of the people here don't want, and the rest of the residents in the town, people don't want this area turned into one of those areas. And if we can limit it, that's great, but we have to do it legally. We just can't put the brakes on people, so we don't want you here because, uh, you have yellow skin. I'm not saying we do that. It's gotta be done at a broad, uh, with a broad rush for everybody.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, you can't target...
Correct.
One of pro, one piece of property or one owner or whatever.
So, here it's coming from, you know, the, the, the board as an overall moratorium.
Like you said, rural residents here. My, my, my kids own houses here. My grandchildren live here. I can't go south. My wife would love me. Great, they were here, down where we're at now. They wanted to change that to, uh, residential and put like two hundred different condos and houses in there. Fifty-six people signed the petition, came down here. They wanted to change that. Can you imagine what that would look like? We put the brakes on that.
Yes, sir, and then don't, lady in the back.
So, my name is Nick Floyd. I live on Weaver Street as well. I mean, every Weaver actually lived right next door to him. I was here last week as well in regards to this warehouse, or the warehouse is being proposed. My issue with it is pretty much everything that they already hit on, nobody was notified of this, and it seems like it's just springing up. I understand, let me just say, I understand development. I'm not saying development's a bad thing. It's a great thing, it has to happen, but that is not the place for two warehouses, two hundred fifty thousand square foot warehouse, a hundred thousand square foot, that's not the spot for it. It's a residential area. So, I just think that something needs to be done where everybody needs to figure out what it's gonna be. Um, and going to what you said before, if it's a pilot, if it's not, Medline was a pilot and way beyond that, got pushed here because they're gonna try to do the same exact thing that they are doing. So, if they do that here, it's gonna be what? A huge vacant warehouse? Like, and if it's all about money...
No, they're gonna, they're gonna sell that, that property.
Whatever it is.
But Nick, you know, we don't notify residents when the construction starts. It's just, you know, it's, it's advertised, there's public hearings, there's a planning process. It's, you know, we don't just go out and tell all residents this is what's gonna happen. It's, that's just not normally done with any of this stuff. But, I mean, we do, you know, there are...
Yeah, and as Kevin said before, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm here forty-seven years and it's, it's been commercial property since the time that I moved here. And when I was on the planning board years ago, numerous people came with projects for that, so it's always been commercial. And, and for the residents that walked there, hopefully they knew that when they moved in that the property behind you, you know, was owned I won.
I just moved in in fall. I, I actually never would have bought that because I have a newborn. He's about to be eight months old. Like, my whole idea coming to the village of Montgomery was it's a historic village, clean, everything. I'm gonna raise my family here. I never would have bought that house, never would have moved here if I knew, because why would I do that? Why do I want that on my back?
No, understood. Yeah, we went to your house, we, we bought them.
Yeah, you did, and I appreciate that. And I do wanna say, I appreciate everything you guys were talking about today. I appreciate the DOT stuff, the police, everything you're doing. I'm law enforcement myself, so I appreciate it, um. But touching on that, if the trucks are such a problem, why are we gonna bring something in here that's just gonna enhance that? Makes absolutely no sense, though. Then with the school, the issue with that, again, traffic, we already talked about that. The kids have to walk to school, so how is that not a safety concern? Because those trucks here, they're going down to eleven, they're going four sixteen, or they're coming this way, and they're hopping out to eighty-four, or they're gonna try to use, like, and that's just what it is. There's no other direction that they can go. So, that, that's probably one of my biggest issues more than anything else is the school and not just my son, but all the other kids that are gonna be dealing with that.
They deal with it by, with the kids going across the street with the police bomb and the crossing road and stuff. Can you imagine if we didn't have that?
You have the sun.
Nick, when you're done, I'm sorry.
Um, I don't, like, I think the winery, just as an example, that's go, that is a good, in my opinion, for the village of Montgomery. That is a good way to enhance monies that you wanna bring in revenue. Well, like, that fits here. I don't see how warehouses fit in this area. That's just my opinion, not...
Yeah, if I could just quickly piggyback off that, that's a creative use of an existing kind of abandoned old building. You know, the fact that we have Learning Together, which is, uh, you know, a school that, you know, our children can learn at. And even this bandstand right next door, it's beautiful. It looks like a historic structure that, that people come to see live music. And I see my son sing Christmas carols there. Warehouses, why are we even here? It's a special exception use. There's plenty of things that are permitted in I one that would be, I, I can't get my haircut at a, at a warehouse. I can't get a bite to eat at a warehouse. I can't keep, take my kid to a park at a warehouse. There's no public utility there. It just sits there. It's just there, creating pollution, creating noise, creating traffic.
And then, if you think it's gonna bring jobs in, it might, but all the warehouses on the other town, they're all looking for people to come work there, and they've been there for years. It's gonna be the same thing there. You're gonna get a handful of people here to come work there, and then they're not gonna fill their spots. They're gonna be moving, bouncing, back and forth for different jobs. That's just what that is.
Nick, that's not just there, that's everywhere.
Right, but I'm just saying, in like the...
A lot of young, younger generation don't wanna work and, and, and some of them are, aren't employable, and it's just, it's, it's, it's an ongoing struggle. Trucking companies, warehouses and everything, so it's just...
But again, that's my point of like, what benefit does it do for, I just don't see it.
Well, it's about what he just said about notifying, uh, is there a law where if they, if they come within a certain, because I got a certified letter, I'm just saying, in...
When, when the time comes for these projects to have public hearings before the planning board, the property owners within, for site plans by three hundred feet will be notified.
Okay.
Plus it'll also be in the paper.
But they have, they have a way to, to clear their property to an extent, too. A lot of that, when it's parent trees, it has to be done between November first and March thirty-first, correct?
Right, correct.
So, because of the, was it not the spot of owens, whatever, whatever?
Indiana bax.
Indiana bax. Yes, ma'am.
Two questions, just, is there any, I, I'm grateful for the moratorium. Are there any that will not be included in the moratorium? Anything that's gotten too far? Anything that's for whatever reason is gonna get to go through?
Well, during the pipeline to a certain extent, like, they can't be, really, right?
Well, the moratorium may not affect them immediately, but the zoning changes could. If they're not, they're not, they don't have a vested right to certain, they haven't taken action for years, so.
Well, let's push it.
We'll, we'll talk about that. Go to the process.
Jeff, let's start to finish it up, because we've gone pretty long here.
Second, second half. Uh, will you guys be working hand in hand with the, the town with their moratorium? Will you be working in conjunction, together, collaborating, or will you be separate?
Probably separate, and we would express our concerns about the Medline project, the traffic and so on and so forth.
So, you won't work together with the, the town together to, as far as the comprehensive plan?
There's two distinct comprehensive plans, but I don't, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't, really don't know. I mean, we don't know, we don't, you know...
The town could, as part of its process, ask, all the villages, as to what they would want to see, yeah? What they wanna see on the borders?
That's, yeah, that's a good point. Yes.
Uh, just, uh, short here, I just wanna let everybody understand the pipeline, what's in the pipeline. That directly affects this village, and I know we've talked about, uh, well, it's town issues, it's not our problem. But from seventeen K, that Scotts Corn is coming into Montgomery, you have quality, you have ponds, that's eighteen houses going into ponds.
Where's Potts, I mean?
Ponds is across the street from the...
Oh, Jimmy Brooks, Jim Brooks's old development, yeah, okay.
That's almost, you have the Womansky thing from Montgomery Heights up to the Cusson thing, uh, that, uh, that seems to be bringing that before the board. That's huge.
That's gonna be huge. Behind, behind Richards?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, condos and...
Wetlands back there.
Yes, and that's what should happen, but they still are proposing that project. Also, just getting on our corridor here, uh, you have across Medline, you have KSH, and once it ever gets going, you have a massive, uh, housing development there, which I concur with, I agree with that. Uh, so, that's why I keep, uh, bringing up for the past year or so, or even longer, why we need cum, cumulative studies done where the town and the village gotta come together, because we do have a town line up there by, uh, the bus, uh, thing over there. But everything beyond that affects the village, and not to mention blue strife and everything that's going down in town.
Yeah, we will, I mean, let's ask for that, that input and express our, you know, when you go to the town, um, Vista Moore, you forgot Vista Moore's gonna be still.
Vista Moore, right.
That's a massive road where, where this, where in the sewer is gonna be coming into Washington, Montgomery, so, yes, ma'am.
So, they actually said last week, the engineer and the architect for KSH, that they are looking to tap into the water from Weaver Street. So, now that's gonna affect everybody's water pressure on the street for this?
I don't believe that's gonna happen.
I'm just saying what, I'm saying what they said.
But that's not doable.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause there's a discrepancy. They thought it was an eight-inch line and...
Right.
Well, it's a ten-inch, it's a ten-inch line.
On Union?
No, and Weaver's a ten-inch line, we put that in a few years back.
Well, the, the, what's the size of the line on Union?
Six.
Six, they had it on their plans as eight. And, and a six-inch, I mean, we're talking circles here, you know, the, the area, you know, it's high or square, we're talking double the volume at that point, you know?
They actually said last week, too, that they're developing it so it doesn't look like a warehouse. They said that. So, that in and of itself, then why are we putting here? If you develop it and make it look not like what it is, then what?
I hear it. The, the planning board, I mean, advisory board, yes, ma'am.
My name is Debbie. I live on Weaver Street also, and I can't agree with all these guys more. I live at the very end on the right-hand side. And, um, I had that big, huge monstrosity house that was put on, put up next to me. Um, it wasn't supposed to be what it is. It's, it's another wet area, and my basement floods every time we get rain, and I have problems with that house, the way it sits. The guy drained all the water out of my basement when I had, he had one of the big, uh, storms that we had. So, I, I can't agree with you more. There's, there's noise, there's light, there's so many things, and I, I think it's horrible to have, um, these hous, warehouses there.
It's a big concern.
It's a big concern.
The master plan, the, the additional committee will look at that, certainly, as soon as possible, okay? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into attorney flag privilege for purposes of DPW personnel.
No, no, construction, construction, what? I need that, what?
Uh, CDA.
I'll make it.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, okay.